All right, good evening. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's February 25th, 2020, at 6:30. We're at the Town Hall in the Senior Center. So would you join me in pudge allegiance to the flag?
Pudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight on our agenda, we have approval of the regular meeting minutes on February 11th. Then we'll have an open forum, Community Relations. Under Appointment Resignations, we have an Appointment Energy Committee, Appointment Town Hall Custodian, and Resignation Council on Aging. We don't have any other scheduled appointments. New Business, request for toll road Shepherd Hill Booster Club, request for special alcoholic beverage license, Charlton Arts and Activities Center. Our IT person, Jeff Sorrell, will be talking about cybersecurity. The public alerts sys-- yeah?
Not my person, sorry.
Sorry, thank you, thank you. We will be tabling the discussion on cybersecurity, but we will, or Jeff will be addressing the public alert system for the electronic message board. Then we have Old Business, then Committee Reports. We have the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Chairman here to give us an update. We have on the policy, Board of Selectmen policy reviews, the social media policy, followed by Student Select Person Report by Anya, the Town Administrator Report by Andrew, and we then follow by Other Business, unknown at time of posting. Then our next meeting dates will be March 10th at 6:30 PM at the Selectmen's Meeting Room, March 18th at 6:00 PM Shepherd Hill High School Library, and March 24th, 6:30 PM Selectmen's Meeting Room. And then we will be adjourning to go into executive session at the end of this meeting. Moving on up, we have minutes of the regular February 11th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, opposed, hearing none, motion passes, it's unanimous, thank you. Community Relations announcements and open forum. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to come up and speak? All right.
Yep.
Come on up. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristin Castigian from AD Carroll-Holloway. Hi, Mr. Wallace, welcome to Charlton.
Good to see you.
I don't think we've met yet, so I just wanted to let you know that I saw that Valley Green Grove is on the executive session tonight, and I wanted to just let you know that I think that there's three different ways that they breach their contracts with the town. And I wanted to ask that the Board consider doing as the contract says, which is notifying them of what you have those breaches, and requesting some sort of right, because I'd like to see that the town doesn't get trampled and try to defend a contract that's completely unenforceable. And that's all I have to say on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Christine Grendalsky from 15 Priscilla Lane. I'm here representing the Charlton Cultural Council this evening on two matters. One is, I'm here to officially invite the Board of Selectmen and our Town Administrator to our event on March 17th, where we have a grant reception for all grant recipients. This year, the Cultural Council awarded over $1,600 in grants that equated to 13 grants for activities and events that will take place in town, where that will benefit a wide range of members in our town, from young to old, including a concert at the Old Home Day Event on the Common, as well as support of the art through the Ages Art Annual Art Show that is put on by the school district every year. So we're very excited about the support that we've been able to give to our grant recipients. But that is on St. Patrick's Day, the 17th, at 6:00 PM in the community room, and so you are all officially invited to participate in that if your schedule permits. I also wanted to just take a moment to create some awareness around the Cultural Council. We are a small group, we are just meeting the requirements to continue to exist as a board, and we could really use some new blood, so I'd ask those that are watching this evening, or those that are in the room, to consider joining us. Our next meeting is on March 9th, and at the moment, we're scheduled to meet at 6:00 PM in the community room in the library. Again, that's open to anyone that cares to come to participate, but we would welcome some new members if that worked. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your efforts, we really appreciate it. Next will be announcements. So what we have going on in town, we have the Taste of the Towns at St. Joseph's Church Hall, 108 Putnam Road Extension, on Saturday, this Saturday, February 29th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. Tickets are available at the Charlton Senior Center or Quarterstone Bank in Charlton. You can call 508-868-5289, or go to the website, racharton.org. Reminder, dog licenses late as of March 1st, please license your dog. Nomination papers are available in the Town Clerk's Office and are due back by Friday, March 13th, 2020. Absentee ballots are now available for the Presidential Primary, March 3rd, in the Town Clerk's Office, or through the mail, see the website. Early voting is February 24th through the 28th. The Third Annual Be Better Basketball Tournament is Saturday, March 21st, 2020. Must register by March 1st, Shepherd Hill Regional High School. Registration starts at 8:30 AM, games begin at 9:00 AM. Grades 5 to 8, coed, high school, women, men, adult coed. All proceeds will benefit the John Pear Student Support Fund. Representative Peter Durant will hold office hours at the Town Hall in the Selectmen's Meeting Room on Monday, March 2nd, 2020, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. And finally, last but not least, the Charlton Arts and Activities Center 10-year anniversary celebration will be Saturday, February 29th, 2020, 12 to 4, 4 Dresser Hill Road. Saturday's going to be an exciting day in town, we'll see if we can. Moving on down, we will talk about the appointment to the Energy Committee, Andrew?
All right. Attached is a talent pick for Gerald Dobell seeking to be appointed to the Energy Committee. At the Board's July 30th, 2019 meeting, you formed the Energy and Environment Committee consisting of seven members. To date, one member has been appointed. The openings have been running on the town's website. Should we receive any letters of interest that we brought to you to make additional appointments? Well, I would recommend to appoint Gerald to the Board.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, it's unanimous, thank you, thank you.
Through the chair, will we be sending him a letter? Will we be sending him a letter telling him he's appointed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next appointment, Town Hall Custodian, Andrew?
We received 19 applications for the custodian position that was posted prior to my arrival. We had four interviews that were held on Thursday, February 20th, for both the Town Hall Position and the Library Custodian Position. Myself, Cheryl Hanson, Kurt Meskis, and Lynn Dyer all sat in on the interviews. After review, we're recommending that we appoint Robert Dewar of Dudley Mass to fill this position, he's in the back. And this position is 40 hours a week at $1,671 per hour.
Would you like to come up and say anything?
Questions I will ask through the chair, it's up to you.
Through the chair.
He's not quick enough. I wholeheartedly endorse bringing Kirby back.
Thank you, thank you.
That was the sentiment to me, the--
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, it's unanimous, congratulations. Welcome back.
Welcome back, Kirby, thank you, thank you.
And next, we have a resignation to talk about, Council on Aging. It's a lot easier when we have our tablets, if you just put right to it, right?
Attached is a resignation from Paul Castellanos from the Council on Aging Board, effective immediately. Per the Board's policy, the opening has been placed at the town's website to allow residents the opportunity to submit their letters of interest. Once the Council on Aging reviews any letters of interest and provides the Board with a recommendation, we will put it on the next agenda. The Board should accept his resignation.
Through the chair.
I make a motion that we accept Mr. Klesnikovich's resignation and send him a letter of appreciation. Paul was always very good on the Council of Aging, and he was a very active participant at town meetings and at our Board of Selectmen's meetings.
We have a motion and a second? Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion, chair votes aye, motion carries, it's unanimous, thank you, yes, thank you, Paul, for your service. All right, moving on, we are now under, any scheduled appointments? New Business, request for toll road Shepherd Hill Booster Club, Andrew?
The Shepherd Hill Booster Club is requesting permission to hold a toll road in Charlton Center at the intersection of Main and Masonic Home Road on Saturday, May 16th, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This request was forwarded to Chief Maxfield, who is in support of toll booth contingent upon the following safety precautions. All volunteers wear bright colored vests. Orange traffic cones must be set out on Main Street and Masonic Home Road for a distance of not less than 50 feet on each respective way prior to reaching the toll station. A minimum of five traffic cones on each roadway should be put in place at a distance no greater than 10 feet apart. Signs warning voluntary toll booth head must be erected on both Masonic Home Road and Main Street not less than 75 feet from the toll station, and no stopping of cars or impeding the flow of traffic in any way. This fundraiser will help toward their goal of repairing the Shepherd Hill Baseball and Softball Fields by improving drainage, creating backstops, and a scoreboard to both the baseball and softball fields. I'd recommend that the Board approve this request.
So moved.
Second? Oh, I'm sorry. The chair's here, I've, you know--
Go ahead.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, it's unanimous.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Aye.
Motion passes, it's unanimous. I'm passing it officially over, back to the Chairman of Steering.
So number two, I guess, for New Business, request for a special alcoholic beverage license, Andrew?
Attached is a request for a special alcoholic beverage license from the Charlton Arts and Activities Council to be used on Saturday, February 29th, 2020, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM at 4 Dresser Hill Road for their 10th anniversary celebration. The Police Department, Fire Department, Building Commission have all approved the request. Per the Board's policy, the license, if approved, should be issued for two additional days, which is to allow delivery of the day before the event, and for pickup the day after the event with no sales allowed. I would recommend the Board approve the special license as requested, with the dates on the license to be February 28th, 2020, through March 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of you in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, unanimous. That moves to number three, IT, and I think we're only doing one correct public license.
Right, yes. So IT technician Jeff Sorrell is here to discuss the public alert system for the electronic message board, and emergency features of the sign can be used. FEMA built IPaws to improve alert and warning capabilities by allowing alerting authorities to deliver alerts simultaneously through multiple communication devices, reaching as many people as possible to save lives and protect property. During an emergency, alert and warning officials need to provide the public with lifesaving information quickly. All alerts are text-only with no graphics. If the Board approves to allow the town to sign up for this program, the group initiating the emergency alert would have access and be able to post the alert on the town's electronic sign as well. I'd recommend that the Board approve having Mr. Sorrell sign up for this feature on the town's behalf, and I'll turn it over to Jeff for the information.
Okay, so basically, it's a free service from the state and federal, local governments, doesn't cost the town anything. We have the option to discontinue service anytime if we feel it's intrusive, but the reason I wanted to bring this to the Board's attention and let them know that the sign had this capability is, do you remember recently, we had that Amber Alert in Springfield, and it was around here where I believe they actually apprehended the person, so the sign does have that ability. And it's all geolocation, so it's not controlled by us as far as how the alert gets posted, it's done by the emergency management agencies that are issuing the alert. And it's all done by, based on geographic location that they determine where they're at.
Through the chair, may I ask a question? So you said, so our electronic sign in front of the library can be used for Amber Alerts?
Correct.
And silver alerts, if it's an elderly person that's missing?
I did not see that option integrated with, from FEMA.
Okay, but it's for more than just natural disasters, weather, things of that nature? For any sort of emergency alert?
We have the option, if we want to personally put anything we want, we have to override to have an alert, but as far as the--
But this particular organization?
Right, I'm not aware of that organization, I didn't see that in documentation. I saw FEMA, MEMA, Amber, Presidential.
Okay, so it covers the gamut then?
Correct. And it is no cost, and it will take me 15 minutes to register and set it up, and again, it's a text issued alert on the sign, it's not like anything flashing crazy colors or anything. I believe you have a sample copy on the next page. And it's, I just want to make the Board aware, you don't have to decide now, if you want it, just let me know and activate it.
Through the chair.
I'd like to make a motion that we have Mr. Sorrell sign us up for this, I think it's just an added feature, be able to have MEMA or other government groups be able to post emergency alerts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So Jeff, just a quick question. When you enhance geotherapy, 100% of the area with no more than one tenths of mile overshoot, that I assume has nothing to do with the sign, but when you get, I'm guessing it does do it when you get the MEMA or FEMA or Amber Alerts on your phone, that this IPaws for those additional alerts is to know if that person is within that geo, that they'll get served that alert, but if you're outside of that geo, you won't?
Correct, the sign is stationary, so if they determine the circumference of what they want to cover, and any sign that's registered gets the alert, so--
Okay, so it's only, so technically, it is for the signs, if we had more than one sign in Charlton, it would know there are two signs within that geo.
Correct, correct. And this isn't replacing anything we currently have, it's just an enhancement of, it doesn't take away from anything else that is active now.
That's a great wish for that town. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll activate it.
I'll listen to her, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, unanimous.
No, I'll activate it. All right. Oh, a quick question, am I sticking around for executive session? Okay, thank you.
Nothing under Old Business, right? So the next item would be US Community Report?
Actually, I'd like to bring the, we have both co-chairs here for the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee. If you'd like to come on up and introduce yourselves at the time and provide an update.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Steve Pullman, co-chair.
I'm Noreen Johnson-Snitzer, 136 Dresser Hill Road.
So we just wanted to update the Board tonight. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, we sort of officially kicked off the announcement of the Capital Campaign Committee. We've met a couple of times, we actually just met prior to this meeting tonight. I just wanted to inform the Board and the public that our campaign material has been completed, so we're going to have a double-sided piece of campaign material that we'll not only be able to hand out, but this may be on the town's website, effective tomorrow. Jeff's been a big help even just today with some last-minute adjustments. And we also have a list of frequently asked questions, both related to the building project, specific related questions, and questions related to the capital campaign in terms of donations, where money's going to go to, those kind of things. All of those Q and A questions will be on the website as well tomorrow through the Finance Office. Mrs. Spiewak was instrumental in working with the Finance Department to get all of the links live. So if you go to townofcharlton.net, you will see on the homepage, there is a button that specifically says Donate Public Safety Building Campaign. If you click on that button, it will bring you to the Public Safety Building Campaign page. That's where you'll find this campaign material, the frequently asked questions list, and then there's an additional button that says, you know, Donate Now, you can click that and then process your donations online. We have a meeting scheduled on Thursday, where we will be talking about sort of getting our outreach plan together, which Noreen is sort of handling, she has a better handle on that, you know, certainly than I do, but we'll be meeting on Thursday to kind of get that strategy together, so.
So I want to thank Selectwoman Spiewak for her leadership on this and for helping to prod us to move quickly. I do want to just note for the public that this is an all-volunteer effort, and so we're fundraising as citizens of this community and asking fellow citizens to come forward and assist us. And as someone who understood the need for a fire station, but didn't know the inside scoop on what goes on inside a fire station, and understood the need for a new police department, but didn't really understand what it means on a day-to-day basis for the folks that protect us as townspeople, I would just like to add that through the meetings that we've had preparing the campaign materials, it has become extremely clear to me that this is a very easy thing to ask people to support, because we desperately need it as a town. We've heard stories of firefighters having to stand in line to put on their equipment to get into a truck, of having to drive in the opposite direction from an accident to pick up the right equipment to go respond to it. We just have a big need in this town to actually do this project, and I know the town voted down the $28 million price tag, and there is another committee working to reduce the costs of the overall building, and we're hoping that we'll also be able to supplement that effort by raising money to offset the costs to the taxpayers as a whole. So we invite all residents of the town to join us, and to please visit the website page that was so nicely set up on the town's website, and to make a direct contribution for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. And through the chair, I did want to acknowledge, I know we have a very small committee, but a very hardworking group, and I know Lois Schubruh is back there, I don't know if we have any other members here? They, they're not. But I did want to acknowledge all of you for your efforts. You've really, nothing to gain from this except, you know, the building, you know, the safe, everything, it's wonderful. But also Andrew, our Town Administrator, Joanne, our accountant, the finance director, this Jeff, there was so much work behind the scenes, yep, Jeff, and to make this, to get us to this point, it was a tremendous, it was a heavy lift, as they say, and we're here now, and it's so exciting, so thank you all for your efforts, and I really have no doubt that it will be successful, because it is such a need, and it makes sense from every perspective, financially, public safety point of view. So thank you, and let's get this started.
Thanks, Karen.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing that I want to say is, there are opportunities for residents of the community to get involved, even if they don't want to be officially on the committee and attend meetings, we do have a list that we're putting together of residents that can help on an as-needed basis for certain projects or, you know, one-time things, so if there are any citizens that are interested in helping, you know, even if it's just for one event, we would ask that you just contact the Town Administrator's Office and just get your name on a list, and then that can be forwarded to us, just so we can kind of have a pool of people that maybe we can call for a specific event, and just see if maybe we can pick up a few more, a few more bodies to help us that particular event.
Through the chair also, and just to add on to this, and it joins nicely together, we did have a Public Safety Building Committee meeting this evening, earlier in the evening. We had a couple of new faces there, and one was an engineer who manages projects for the city of Worcester, he brought us a fresh set of eyes to it. Another person's a long-time, long-time citizen of town who has been involved in school building projects, he brought another, another set of eyes to it. We ask anybody that wants to come and get involved in this, and has, you know, you don't need technical expertise, but if you have any technical expertise in any field that would be involved in the building of the Public Safety Buildings, i.e. and such as electrical engineering, HVAC, you know, interior finishing, masonry, any of that stuff. You people know what is going on out in the, out in the field now, and you can bring a special, you know, a critical eye to some of the things that we're going to be looking at, and make sure that we get the bang for our buck. Everybody that's here is volunteer, and, you know, once again, thank you very much.
And before we end, I did want to acknowledge, I saw Mr. Grendalsky, is that how you pronounce it? Grendalsky just came in, he's the liaison from FinCon on our committee, and he's been very, very helpful with things like the donor form, and we appreciate your efforts, John, so we just know that. And the last comment, and I don't think it was said, Steve, that we're willing to accept any donation, any amount, and we are very grateful, and all donors will be listed on our town's website under the appropriate heading, whatever, but again, we appreciate, we appreciate any amount you're willing to donate to help this cause, so, no.
And I would just add that for larger contributions, there will be naming opportunities, so if someone would like to fund the entire project, we will name it after you.
Step up.
Take that into consideration.
And Steve will want to talk to him afterwards. He's got a building.
But there will be opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the US Community Report, Andrew, Public Safety Building--
Hello, please.
Sorry, social media.
So currently, the absence of a town-sponsored social media account really limits our ability to push out information that's relative to town business. I'm working to establish a town social media presence through Facebook and Twitter as an outlet to publish the information for residents relative to the operations of town government. Prior to doing so, though, it's important that the use of social media as a governmental entity is governed by a written policy. Attached will find a copy of a draft social media policy which would guide the departmental use of social media. Departments that currently use social media, including Police and Fire, rely on internal policies issued by department heads through their general orders. The intent of the proposed policy is in no way to limit anybody's free speech or fringe on any existing labor agreements, but this policy has been reviewed by the Technology Committee and by Legal Council to conform to the existing policies and laws, and I'd strongly recommend passing this policy.
So, Andrew, just for clarification, this applies only to official town accounts?
Correct.
So the town's Facebook page, the town's Instagram account we have on town email, and does not in any way, shape, or form affect anyone's ability to post on their own person's account? This is only the town over the town.
That's correct, and in the case that somebody is to violate the policy by, you know, writing on a town Facebook page nearly, it also gives us a little bit of, you know, the backbone as to reasons why we'd have a post read.
But it does not stop if you post on their own person's?
Correct, first.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Just thank you.
Just a follow-up question, Andrew, whether you plan on getting this up and running?
Starting tomorrow.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, unanimous, thank you, Andrew. The next would be the Student Select Person's Report.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, make them proud.
All right. So February 28th, which is this Friday, TRAM is hosting their second annual period night at 6:00 PM. You're welcome to join. March 2nd is the athletic team orientation night for the entire athletic department at Shepherd Hill at 6:30 PM. March 4th-- March fourth is music parents' meeting at six PM. March tenth is Booster Club meeting at seven PM. As mentioned, at the beginning of the meeting, the third annual John Pear basketball tournament will be March twenty-first. I can offer some additional information about it. It's a hundred fifty dollars a team for up to four players and forty dollars for every additional player. Checks can be made payable to the Friends of John Pear, Inc. New this year, they're going to have a kids' home, so there's going to be games for kids to play while their parents might be playing basketball, and it's seven dollars per child. They're going to have a giant Connect Four board, a giant Jenga, and an inflatable basketball hoop, and Christopher Lindstrom will also be making an appearance at the basketball tournament in order to sign autographs and meet people. The Memory Project is currently happening at Shepherd Hill with our National Art Honor Society. It's a unique initiative in which art students create portraits for children and teens around the world who have been neglected, orphaned, or disadvantaged. As much as possible, they also want to help the kids see themselves as a work of art. To do this, art students receive photos of the kids on their waiting list and work in any medium to create portraits of them. And Shepherd Hill's been participating in this memory project for multiple years, and it's been sponsored by the Booster Club. And this year, they had twenty portraits of children all from Nigeria. Mo's will be catering lunch on Friday for any senior who has completely paid off their dues, so if you're a parent of your kid watching, pay off your dues because Mo's. The Shepherd Hill journals in class, the Hill Telegram was featured on ABC News this morning in their eye-opener segment, so go check that out. March thirteenth at six PM will be the annual Student Council Dodgeball Tournament, and some awards that have been won in the past month. The Shepherd Hill Girls Traffic Team had runners Bateman Gonzalez, Marsh Sullivan, and Zanotti qualified to compete in All States this Saturday, and the Shepherd Hill Cheerleaders won Grand Champs over February break in South Haven. A quick update on the mock town meeting, I did send a copy of the warrant that I drafted and the brochure for this year to the teacher that I'm in contact with at John Middle School, as well as to Andrew and to Mary, Mary looked it over and edited it, so it looked, it mirrored more closely our current warrant, and it is set officially for April tenth right now, from ten to eleven. I will send all of you to your email if you'd like a copy of the warrant, so you can look at it and add any commentary, but yeah, that's all I have.
So, thank you, now, forgive me, maybe wrong, have we met since you guys got back from Ireland, though?
Well, yeah.
Never mind.
Okay.
It's been a long day. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so the town history report.
Great, so a few items here, so I've been working with the finance team on a job description for a Director of Assessing and Transition position, which would help fill our Director of Assessing position with the upcoming retirement of our current director. This person would work with the director in a training capacity with the intent of taking over immediately upon her retirement. Right now, I'm still reviewing this with the finance team and the personnel board to figure out the most appropriate way of implementing this position prior to the retirement of our assessors, that way we have a little bit of crossover training in transition. Currently, we're working on setting up an Alice training for employees in the summer. Once we have all the details worked out, we'll bring this to the full board for your approval. I'm also working with the Human Resources Department to repost the position of the Human Resources Director due to the lapse of time since the last posting. Any candidate that previously applied will be asked if it'd still like to be considered, and I'll be meeting with the Personnel Board to review the candidates as well. We have posted that already, and so if you go to the Human Resources site on the website, you can find out all the interesting stuff about the Human Resources Director. The town of Southbridge has posted the Veterans, the District Veteran Services Director position, which would also serve the town of Charlton as Veterans Agent. Applications are due February twenty-eighth or until the position is filled. In accordance with the Southbridge Code ordinances, this position must be held by a Southbridge resident. And discussing some community issues with the board health, it was discussed that we may want to look at taking a team approach toward addressing some blighted properties, specifically ones that may affect neighborhood property values or create, or hazards that might create breeding grounds for mosquito larvae, as we had discussed at the previous meeting about mosquito issues. I'm currently working to establish a task force at departments that meet regularly to identify some of these properties and develop an approach toward cleaning them through local code enforcement measures. I do have meetings scheduled in the next few weeks, and hopefully we can discuss some ideas, and I'll keep the board updated as far as what goes on at those discussions. One last thing, I didn't have on the list, but I just want to thank the Cub Scouts for inviting me to their Arrow of Light ceremony last night, we had four graduates that were doing their council event, and I just wanted to recognize them for their achievement and those that are continuing to Boy Scouts.
Is there any other business on the panel? No? That being said, our next meeting will be the BOS regular meeting on March tenth, two thousand and twenty, six thirty PM in the Selectment Meeting Room. A BOS special meeting, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at six PM, at Shepherd Hill High School Library, that'd be a good one, and then a BOS regular meeting, again, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty PM in the Selectment Meeting Room.
Through the chair. Just to make an announcement that I should have on the Community Relations, the Public Safety Building Committee will be meeting March twenty-fourth at five PM in the Board Selectment Meeting Room.
Thank you. Anyone can make a motion for...
Through the chair. I make a motion that we enter executive session on the Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One, and Number Two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, highway union and VGG, if an open meeting might, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair, so to place.
And the chair does so declare?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we'll do this by roll call, vote Miss Spiewak.
Aye.
Ms. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. McGraw?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, we are now in executive session, we will not be executive session solely for the point of adjournment unless there is some business that has to go on publicly, based upon what happens in the executive session, then we will also take care of that move.